She put her mic on.
Live on our website.
I was rearranging my desk.
Here, I see you.
Tom Cast just joined us. Standby for Facebook. Okay, we're all set.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get the August 2011, 2020 City of Gallatin Council Committee meeting to order. At this time, I need to read the Governor Lee's executive order pursuant to Governor Lee's executive order number 16, number 34, number 51, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19 to August 11, 2020 Gallatin Council Committee meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be live streamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of this council and citizens of Gallatin. During the Zoom meeting at HTTP, well, y'all can read that there, or dial 1-470-250-9358, or 1-470-381-2552, and enter webinar ID 81065145959. And at this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Here.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And at this time, approval of the minutes for the June 23, 2020 Council Committee electronic meeting and the July 14, 2020 Council Committee electronic.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes, we have to vote to have the meeting electronically.
Oh, okay. All right, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Have a motion and a second. Now we need a roll call again.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven Is, Zero Nays.
Thank you. Now at this time, the approval of the minutes for the June 23 and July 14 Council Committee electronic meetings.
Most approved, both.
Okay, have a motions or a second?
Second.
Yeah, second by Councilman Fan. All those in favor?
Uh. Roll call.
Roll call, that's right, roll call. Here we go.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell. Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Aye.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Minutes past seven zero.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Right now, we'll have public recognition of anything that's on the agenda tonight. Everybody, please keep your comments to, I think, what is it, five minutes?
Yes.
Five minutes, you know, and please, please don't be redundant, you know, about what other people are saying, but just, you know, make your point. And I think Paige is, Mayor Brown is gonna keep up with the time. So if there's anybody who'd like to speak at public recognition, this is your time.
Very good, sir. I will call up the cellphone numbers and for the other people on their laptops, if you'd use the raise your hand function, so I can tell if you'd like to speak. Let's start with the cellphone ending in 435. You have something you'd like to say? And a reminder that you'll still have to unmute yourself if you're on there on your computer. Okay, moving on to 085. Okay, and cellphone ending in 283. Those are our cellphone. Ray Carmen, you're unmuted, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just wanna make a quick comment about the Twin Eagles annexation over here on Douglas Lane. This came up before Planning Commission several months ago. We as a community just came together, we just, and we've let most of you know, we're opposed to that annexation and the use of the property coming out here to Douglas Lane, really concerned about lifestyle. We, everyone out here balked to kind of be out in the county and in the country, and to have a subdivision for them to put a road out, knowing it's just for quote 30 homes now, but the future plan for several hundred homes is a very big concern with Douglas Lane being very small, and its width, some places only 22 feet. A big construction truck, school buses, things like that, meet a normal-sized car, you actually have to get out of their way so they can go by. There's two, four L-curves, and I'm not S-curves, L-curves on this road, if you haven't driven it lately, that can cause some severe accidents probable. We have a lot of teenagers, I have two personally, that drive out on this road, and we just feel like the influx of traffic here would be a negative impact upon our community. Just would like to ask the council to consider that when you're voting on that particular issue. You know, the Planning Commission was unanimous in saying no, and we would just appreciate you being consistent with them in this regard. We can understand Mr. Jones balked the property to do something with, but there's other options other than what he is asking to do that would still get him the opportunity to make money. So just wanna make that known as a representative of the community that we're not in favor of that happening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We had an additional cellphone that joined us, ending in 968. We're in public recognition. If you'd like to speak, go ahead. Okay, moving on. Pascal, go ahead.
Yes, this is June Hedge, and I live on this street, and it's so narrow, and it's just, it's impossible to meet other, you know, to other cars. It's just, it's hard to travel, and if the traffic gets any more, I can't imagine how much worse it would be. It just, you know, I've only been here a couple of years, but we love the area, and we love living in Sumner County, but it's just, it cannot handle any more traffic than what it's got. The curves are tremendous, and we just cannot afford any more, any more traffic on this road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Joe Vances, go ahead, please.
Yeah, Pascal, 1-335, Long Island, Gallatin. Just a good evening. I agree with these people on the road. Actually went, drove on that road this week, and there's no way, I had to pull over for another truck and a trailer, so there's no way this road can sustain what's planned. So that's just, what I have to say. Michelle, is there anyone to say something?
Good evening. I was calling to talk about the Bledsoe Springs annexation. It looks like we're looking to expand the city out towards the east with that annexation, and I was reading the Plan of Service, and it's requiring the new fire station, and that's gonna cost a lot of money. I remember when we had the new fires, the last fire station just a couple of years ago, and it cost about $2.5 million, and a half a million dollars for a fire truck, and then staffing it is almost a million dollars per year. So this is something that I'm wondering how we're gonna pay for it. We just had a pandemic budget that we cut a lot of stuff. We're not even paying for all the road repairs and all of the road maintenance that we should be doing. There's a lot of roads that need to be repaired that are already in the city, and I don't see how we're gonna pay for a fire station. That's a lot of money, and I would like to have you all discuss that this evening, please, because I don't want to have our taxes raised to pay for annexing in more land that we don't need, because we can't even take care of everything that we already have right now properly. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. And before we move on to the next one, if you were one of the remaining people, be sure and use the raise your hand function, and we'll recognize you. Right now, we'll go to Scott Goodwin. Go ahead. You'll still have to unmute yourself. Scott Goodwin, are you there? Okay. We'll come back to Scott. Frank Marquesi, please go ahead.
Yes, hi. Good evening, Frank Marquesi, 589 Harris Lane. I just had a question. I might get confused. Is this a work session or a regular council meeting? Is this a gender-related item?
This is a council, council meeting.
Okay, so this is a gender-related. My apologies, I'll raise my hand.
It's committee meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that, I was incorrect. It is a committee meeting, sorry about that.
Okay. I did have a question. I remember when the initial discussion about the Dollar General came up, their signage and their building, the style of the building was in question, and I believe it was reported that we were gonna get some improvements to look more like Hendersonville than standard Dollar Generals, and I noticed the signage was in, and it, it looks like the regular old Dollar General signage. I'm just wondering what happened to the improved signage. I remember a discussion, Councilman Love had asked a bunch of questions back then. I'm just concerned that if there were rules to be followed, that they weren't followed. I could be wrong or misunderstood what happened, but I just want to bring that to council's attention, that there is no improved signage. It's just your standard Dollar General look and feel in this neighborhood. And I was also wondering if Mr. Tuttle is gonna present anything about Harris Lane and Long Island tonight. That's all I had.
Thank you. Victoria Hagan, go ahead.
Hey, I live out here on Douglas Lane, actually at 599, and I wanted to talk about that annexation possibly from Twin Eagles. I've been out here approximately 16 years. We have had a lot of growth. We've had a few farm sale, but they've sold those, those, those tracts in like five-acre and 10-acre lots. So we didn't get as much traffic as we would have with this particular situation going on. We did have a petition that went to the Planning Commission. I believe it was supposed to be sent over to you all for this evening's meeting, and it's signed by everyone that lives out here. We have approximately 63 homes out here, and so our road is three miles from one end to the other, and we have four very dangerous curves, two of which are 90 degrees, and two are probably 70 degrees. Like Ray Carmen had said, when there's a bus on this road, you have to pull over. If there's a truck coming out here with the construction that we did have, you have to pull over. The sides of the roads are, there's no, there's no shoulder at all. So it's a very dangerous road, if you don't know it. We also have a couple of people out here, the farmers with their tractors, and we also have a couple people with horses and horse trailers, and when they come down this road, we have to pull over. Their proposal was to put a gravel road in there and not even pave it, number one. It's supposed to be emergency exit for emergency vehicles, which I don't believe is gonna be a safe option, number one. And if they did do it with blacktop, if they changed that, it's still such a narrow road out here, Douglas Lane. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it. So you would be going from basically a city road to a county road, and the county roads are pretty narrow. So I'm concerned about the safety of our people that live out here and possibly anybody else that would be driving out here. If, so I'm gonna ask y'all to deny his request at this point, because it's just, it's just, it's a, it's a safety issue. I'm a school bus driver here in Sumner County, and I can tell you what, it's a pretty dangerous road. I drive a lot of the roads out here, and this one's pretty bad. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. We've had one additional cellphone caller. We are in public recognition. If your cellphone ends in 224, it's your chance to speak. Go ahead.
That sounded.
Okay, and.
There's one person on Facebook asking how, how do you speak? They don't see anything that tells them to raise their hand, if you.
That is through Zoom. We have the link to the Zoom coordinates on gallatinTN.gov at the top of the page, and they can follow the links to the Zoom meeting there. In the meantime, Scott Goodwin. Okay, moving on to Katie Carmen. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Katie Carmen. I live, also live on Douglas Lane in Gallatin, and I am also calling in regards to the subdivision that they're wanting to put in and land out on Douglas. And I noticed that they did a traffic study a few months ago, but I also know that that was at the beginning of the pandemic, and when everybody was staying home for work, and there was no school going on. And also, they did the traffic study at the corner of 25 and Douglas, which doesn't take into account the narrowness of Douglas Lane, and how important that is in making this decision, because, again, there is safety, things going on there, and I just don't feel like it's safe to land a road like that out onto Douglas Lane, which so much traffic and how narrow our road is. So I would just like for y'all to take that into account as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I notice, Mr. Goodwin, you are unmuted. Do you wish to speak? Okay.
Yeah, I just had a message that says the link to the Zoom meeting in, on the agenda is not working, and that they are having to enter the Zoom meeting ID in, to get in instead of the link.
Okay. We know the link's working, because the rest of the attendees who are available, that meeting ID would get them to the same place through Zoom. We're finished with the comments where people have raised their hands. It's up to you guys if we wanna wait any further.
Any more public recognition? Is that it, Jeff?
Currently, there are no other people asking to speak.
Okay. At this time, we'll go to Mayor's comments. Mayor?
Thank you. I was gonna suggest that you let me test that link, and that way I can see if it is indeed working. The only comment that I have this evening is, I do want to remind everyone, to remind everyone you know, that we have got to get on the census here in Gallatin. We are woefully behind. Our numbers are lower than they were 10 years ago, and remember, what's at stake is, I think, $145 per resident that lives in our city. So please encourage everyone you know to get online and fill out the census. Always, also want everyone to be aware that census workers are in the field starting this week. So if a census worker comes to your home, please take just a minute, that's all it will take, and answer their questions, so that you can complete the census for your household, and we can get a better count for the city of Gallatin. And that would be all.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll move on to the agenda, and item number one, ordinance 02008-30. Rosemary Bates.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay. This is part of the development agreement that we have with Woolhawk. They are asking the city to be in charge of building the Gateway Drive extension down to Hartsville Pike. The development agreement required them to deposit $1 million for the beginning of that project. It will certainly cost more than that, and we are just asking that that money, which has already been deposited in a city account, be appropriated to a budget line in the Economic Development Agency, from which we will manage and pay the invoices related to that construction project.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Can we roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Vote, seven Is, zero Nays.
Thank you. Item number two, resolution number 2008-44, David Gregory.
David, you're muted. David, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Yeah, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a contract 320 to 2020 with Crom Corporation LLC. It's part of the Woolhawk project. The funds have already been paid by Woolhawk, and we're asking this to let her sign the contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion is second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
The vote is seven Is, zero Nays.
Thank you. Item number three, resolution number R2008-45. David, you're up again.
Yeah, this is authorizing the mayor to, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign contract 420, 2020 with Infinity Pipeline Incorporated, and this is for the water lines, 12-inch water line, this one, for that Woolhawk project. It was also, money's also been appropriated by them.
Most approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven Is, zero Nays.
Thank you. The item number four is ordinance number 02008-33. David Gregory?
This is a ordinance awarding the bid and authorizing funds in the amount of $12,200,000 from Water and Sewer Reserves for the construction of a sanitary sewer drainage basin, a flow equalization basin, contract 120, 2020. We bid the project, we had some, came in under, under what we thought it was gonna be. We thought it was gonna be like 11 million, 800,000 for construction, and the low bid was 10 million, 584. This is a project that we've been working on for two years, and promised the state that we would do to keep from bypassing number one station.
Most approved.
Second.
Have a motion. Who made the second?
Councilman Fan.
Okay, Councilman Fan. All right, in discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven Is, zero Nays.
Thank you. All right, items number five through 11, dangerous buildings. Chuck Stewart?
Chuck, you're muted.
I erased it, okay. Items five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10, all those homes, you have a package on all of those that we sent you with the photographs, with all the reports that I Inspector and Jessica Jackson from PD has been on the buildings. All those buildings meet the intent of the International Property Maintenance Code, and also the intent of our ordinance for dangerous buildings. I'm asked tonight to move those forward for a show call here, and I'd like to extend our ordinance calls for 30 days, no more than 30 days to hold a show call, but because of this number of properties, because we've got some deceased owners, the attorney's office will have to do some advertising in the newspaper and et cetera for us to bring this forward, and I'd like to move a date out for 48 days, which would put us to the October 6 meeting, because we're, because of Zoom and the cost of time constraints, if we could do that, I think that'd make it easier on the attorney's office and also easier on my department.
Can we do that all at one time for all of these, or do we have to do it one by one?
I'm gonna defer to the attorney for that one.
You really need to do these one by one, because they deserve to be spoken to, and also the, the ordinance does require 30 days from the date of the complaint. So if, if you desire to have it October 6, what we can do is do all of our research and get everything ready, so that in September, we send the complaints out and get everything advertised, so we're still within 30 days. So the 30 days is actually from the date of service of the complaint on these owners.
So move.
Second.
Okay, is that for all five through?
She said we, it is for all of them, she said we had to do one at a time.
Okay, item number five, got a motion, second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Vote is seven Is, zero Nays.
Okay, item number six, is there a motion?
So move.
Seven.
A motion and second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Vote, seven Is, zero Nays.
Thank you. Item number seven, do I hear a motion?
So move.
Overton, second by Fennell. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Vote is seven Is, zero Nays.
Okay, item number eight, do I hear a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Overton, Fennell. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Vote is seven Is, zero Nays.
Okay, thank you. Item number nine, do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Fan, second by?
John D.
John Alexander. Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
The vote is seven Is and zero Nays.
Thank you. Motion number 10?
So move.
Second.
Alexander, Overton. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven Is, zero Nays. Seven ayes, zero nays.
Okay, council, number eleven on Rucker Street has been torn down and prior to the meeting tonight. And the only thing left is debris pile that Officer Jackson's working on then to clean the debris up. That one's gone.
Okay, so we do not need to do anything on that one?
No, sir.
Okay.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
Let me say to Mr. Stewart, I really appreciate your effort on behalf of you and your staff of cleaning up the dangerous building. Thank you so much and I appreciate all the work you do.
Do you hear that, Mr. Stewart?
Yes, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
All right. All right, on item number twelve, ordinance number zero two zero zero eight dash three two. Josh King.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, mayor. My name is Josh King and the Assistant City Planner. Agenda item number twelve is a project called Bella Vista. It calls for twenty-nine single-family residences on thirteen point seven six acres located south of East Broadway. It provides open space lots, twenty-nine single-family residence, residential lots, and a potential connection to the south for future development when the adjacent parcels develop. Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval of this item. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Overton, second by Steve Fan. Any discussion?
I like the way these houses look when I see this attachment. They look nice.
We'll share that with the developer council on the, thank you.
Okay. All right, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
The vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
Thank you. Item number thirteen, resolution number R two zero zero eight dash four six, Josh King.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With your permission, item thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen are all items related to the same project. It's called Bledsoe Spring and we can, I'll save discussion for each one of them and just put it all together.
Okay.
At the same time. So this is a project called Bledsoe Spring. There's a plan of service and annexation and a rezoning preliminary master development plan. It calls for a total of one hundred and eighty-three residential units, one hundred and two of which are attached residential in the form of a townhome, eighty-one of them are single-family residential lots. It provides two connections to Hartsfield Pike and one emergency connection to an existing subdivision to the east. The plan of service did recommend the city start looking at the power station for that side of town. We're working very closely with our IT and GIS departments on coming up with some background data to evaluate with, in conjunction with Chief Andy and the fire department, some potential locations on existing land to ensure that future city investments are maximized to reach the highest number of households. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval of these items and it's a total of forty-four point seven nine acres. There is a related item with the abandoned railroad right-of-way. It's approximately two point five one acres. We are going through the final processes of determining its true abandonment from the railway. We have our city engineering staff working on that as we speak to determine the final ownership of it and to ensure that it's equitably divided between this project and the adjacent parcels in the industrial park. We hope to have that completed before this item is heard again at a public hearing. But if, if we're not able to resolve it, we will have to defer it until the item abandoned railroad right-of-way is resolved. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, any discussion?
Craig, I'd like to.
Do we have a motion first?
I'll make a motion.
Right. Who was that?
Alexander.
All right, Alexander, second.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Craig, I'd just like to say on the fire station, you know, we've already got some property out on Airport Road that we're going to build on at some point. I mean, the new fire station we just built is right at Airport Road and went on that. So it, I mean, it'll handle anything we got out there right now, but, but we have the plans to build one already and already have the property for it, so.
Yeah, because we've been talking.
We've been talking about this for a long time.
A long time, yeah.
So, so when that time comes, you know, we're ready to do it, so.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion?
I do. I'd just like to say that I know that we will eventually need that fire station, but up until this point, we've been told we didn't need it. So I feel like this is going to expedite that. And also, under police department comments, it says that additional police officers and vehicles are going to be needed to provide service to that area. Actually, this is getting out towards what we think of as out in the country. And the people that live out there that have contacted me don't want this. I wanted to know, first of all, how near are these homes going to be to the industrial center? That's the question I have.
Mile, mile and a half away.
Okay. I also wanted to say that the number of townhomes seems excessive for this area, which, like I said, that we still think of that as out in the country because that's what people bought houses and build houses thinking. And if you compare that area to the, the areas over on Hollerman, Robertson Road, Carroll and Lane, those are all on, on very large, much larger lots. And apparently, this is going to be four units per acre. I feel like that that is just too, just too much density for that area. It's the lots, the lot size is just really inconsistent with the homes that are there. And I don't, I really am not for this.
Okay, any other discussion?
We had any objections, Ms. Love, other than what, how many people have contacted you?
Oh, I'd say twelve. And you know, I, I mean, this is where I live and where I grew up that way.
You've got another subdivision right there beside it, but almost, I don't know, I don't know how many houses there per lot. I guess Josh could probably answer that, but there's another.
I drove through that one and the, the lot sizes are much larger than this.
Let me say, I've owned houses on Hollerman and I've owned houses on Hillside. I've sold houses in Sonoma. That is in the county. They're all on septic system. So they're required to have a forty thousand square foot lot.
All right.
This is going to be on sewer and everything else, so you don't need a lot that big.
Anybody else? If not, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
No.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
The vote is six ayes and one no.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we're on to, and that was for thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, correct?
They told you they weren't going to ask the question. Now, no one complained and made any issue about Don Bandi needing police cars.
I mentioned that.
But the fire station, we don't leave that. We just build that new station that's Station Five. It's not. It's ten minutes away. It can't go.
Now, chief, I mentioned the, the police also.
No, I wanted to have an opportunity to address the comment that was made that the new station can cover. And Station Five is actually ten minutes away in response. It's farther away than Fire Station One is. So Fire Station One would actually be the primary response station with Fire Station Five being the secondary response. So I just wanted to put that officially on the record so we have accurate information. That Station Five, that Station Five is not close enough to provide those services.
Chief, you must not have heard me right. Chief, you must not have heard me right. Because when I said that at the end of my comment, I said, we already have some property on Airport Road that at some point, we're going to build a fire station. So you must not have heard the end of my comment.
No, I, I did hear the end of your comment, but also heard your first assertion that said that we just built Station Five. And that could suffice.
Let's get this back in order because we've already voted on this. This should have been brought up under the comments.
Well, I wasn't given an opportunity to speak and I just wanted to put that on the record for clarification.
I know what, but I asked if anybody else had any comments, so we need to, we need to take that into consideration. But yes, and we, we, we've had plans out there for years to probably build a fire station. As Jimmy said, he did make that comment.
That's right.
So, all right, was that thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen?
Yes.
Okay. Item number sixteen, resolution number R two zero zero eight dash four one, Josh King.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Items sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen are all related to the same project, which is Twin Eagles Phase Fifteen. It calls for thirty-seven single-family residential lots and a paved access road to Douglas Lane. This project would be consistent with what already exists in Twin Eagles. Any commission recommended approval of the item. Staff recommend approval of the item. We have been working with our engineering department reviewing the traffic impact analysis that was submitted by the applicant about a week or two ago. So we've been looking through the recommendations from the unit and Buck or Nick, in front of a few of the faces, can provide more information about discussions that we've been having with accounting on potential improvements they'd like to see on Douglas Lane. Happy to answer any questions.
I thought, I thought you, I thought Planning Commission denied this.
I stand corrected. They did not recommend approval of the rezoning master plan.
Yeah, they did not recommend this.
Staff recommended approval. Planning Commission did not recommend approval of this item. I stand corrected.
Well, what was the reason that Planning Commission did not recommend approval? And I think, Sean, aren't you on there still?
Yes.
What was the reason?
The primary reasoning was the increased traffic that is generated on Douglas Lane, which is a narrow country road.
Yeah. And you know, that, if y'all don't travel Douglas Lane, I ride bikes out there a lot. And you know, when you pass a school bus or something like that on that road, even if you're in a car, you have to stop. I don't see how we can add additional traffic on to that road. I really don't, the way it's designed right now. And I guess, Josh, what you're telling me is that if he does this, he's going to have to have access to Douglas Lane, right?
Right, yes.
Okay. I just, I don't see how that can happen. I don't, I don't see that. I mean, I, I can't, I can't funnel that traffic out onto Douglas Lane like it is now unless there's another way, another access point for him to do this.
Hey, Ms. Taylor, let me ask Josh a question if you don't mind.
Yeah.
After you finish, I'm sorry.
I'm done. Go ahead.
Okay. Josh, have there been any consideration in regards to the road as for the improvement? And who will be lobbying for that, the county or the city or the developer?
Yes, Councilman Alexander. Our engineering department has been working with the applicant and the county to identify needed improvements on Douglas Lane to reduce some of the perceived dangers on Douglas Lane and to make it a safer road with the increased traffic. I was not able to follow up with Nick today to get the latest information on it. But I believe Buck, Buck and Nick are both on the call. They are welcome to chime in at any time.
Thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Nick.
Councilman Alexander, this is Nick Tuttle. And we, we did receive a traffic impact study on this last week. We haven't gotten through the review on it. So we don't have anything to report on that. But through the discussion that we have had with the developer and with the county concerning the road, this is, it is a county road which doesn't have really dedicated right-of-ways. They're really prescriptive right-of-ways, which means that for the most part, the land that's out there is, is, it's going to be difficult to, you'd have to work with property owners to make improvements to the roadway. So it's a challenge. So from the county's perspective and what I, the feedback that I have heard and received from Judy Harden, the Sumner County Highway Department head, has been that the county is not interested or would, would not require any improvements to be made to Douglas Lane. And, and the reason for that is because they don't believe that they can make the improvements. They don't believe that they can widen because of the prescriptive right-of-way nature there. Not to say that, no, there isn't some need, but the, to make improvements would be near impossible. It would mean that you'd have to, to get agreement from, from all of the property owners out there to widen the roadway. There, I, I believe, again, I haven't had time to review the traffic impact study, but I believe, according to the developer, that traffic impact study makes some claim that there may be some need to make improvements at the intersection of Douglas Lane and Long Hollow, or not Long Hollow Pike, Red River Road. So I don't know what that looks like, what kind of improvements they're talking about, if it would all be on the state right-of-way or if there's other right-of-way that would need to be acquired by the developer. But in the conversations that we've had, I think that the answer to your question is, is that Ms. Judy Harden with the Sumner County Highway Department is not requiring any improvements to be made to Douglas Lane except for possibly something that would be in the bounds of this Twin Eagles annexation. In other words, what that property owner, the developer, has available to them. So it would just be, I think there's around maybe three to four hundred feet of route on Douglas Lane. It may be more than that. I may be lowballing that. But there's not a lot of road frontage that this particular property has, the annexation. But that would be the only area that Ms. Harden may require improvements.
I drove out there today, if you're finished, Nick, I was just going to say. I drove through there today and I cannot imagine the trouble that adding more cars onto that road would cause, especially from a subdivision. There are big curves, very narrow country road, and I believe that the Planning Commission was right in denying this.
Then I also drove through there today. On that particular road, I don't see how we can access that road. But my question is, continuation of Twin Eagles, what houses that he prescribes to build there? Can't we just turn around and keep the connectivity with the Twin Eagles exit that, those roads right there?
I think the concern is that there's so many houses in there with only one entrance.
How many more houses, Josh, are going to be in this development or in this, in this plan here? You're on mute.
There we go. This phase contains thirty-seven single-family residential units, but the, if you look at it attached to the two in the package for this item, it does show that there's additional land that's owned and would likely be developed in a similar fashion to the rest of Twin Eagles at a future date.
Which would, do you know how many total there would be if all of it was developed out?
I don't have a unit count of.
Is Andy on the call? Who could tell us?
Andy is on the call. Jeff, if you wanted to unmute him, he is the applicant's representative.
This is Andy Wade with Grell &amp; Design. We've also got Mr. Randy Jones here with me as well at the office. Right now, preliminarily, we have about a hundred seventy-eight units, only remaining sixty acres plus or minus Twin Eagles.
Okay, so Sean, what was your question about what?
If Randy goes ahead and develops a house is just on that tract of land to connect into Twin Eagles or the roads that we already have in Twin Eagles carry that additional traffic.
Councilman Fennell, if you don't mind, I wouldn't mind addressing your question. Again, this is Nick with the City Engineering Department. And currently, there's around four hundred units that are constructed within the existing Twin Eagles development. I think either constructed or planned to be constructed through the rest of Phase Fourteen, which he already has. I think either constructed or, or planned to be constructed through the rest of Phase Fourteen, which he already has, uh, approved. And I don't think it's all one hundred percent platted yet, but, um, he's got approved construction plans and approved zoning. And so, uh, there's, um, he has the right to go ahead and develop out the rest of those lots to get up over four hundred units. Um, just, we, the city has not adopted this appendix of the fire code because it is, um, very aggressive and. And wouldn't be good practice for us, but just for, um, for an idea of what the fire code would suggest is, um, too many homes or too many units. For one fire, um, access road, which would be Wildcat Run, uh, the fire code suggests no more than thirty units on one fire apparatus access road. And, and like I said, he's got thirty, over four hundred, uh, that are approved, um, already. And so to add potentially another. One hundred on top of that. Um, for, for quite some time, the city has, it's, um, been, has, has, has had the position, at least the staff and the planning commission that. Um, to continue to develop out Twin Eagles, um, even further towards Douglas Lane, there has to be a secondary access point. Because we're just getting, uh, further and further down the road where it is dangerous to continue to develop in that way.
Craig, if I, if I could say a couple of things.
Go ahead.
I think these houses that, and I went, I went out there several times and looked at it myself. I think these houses that these three or four lots, whatever they are, I don't know how many, two to four lots. I think I would like to see them turned around facing Douglas Lane. And my request would be that. Uh, we do not use this road. I think he needs to build it out, uh, as in phases. And then not use this as a construction entrance or anything until, you know, it's probably going to be ten to fifteen years before you get this thing built out. And, uh, you know, we'd open up at that point. Uh, I don't think many cars would ever go out there to go to Douglas Lane. I just don't, I don't see them traveling that road. But I think Nick's right. I think you got to open it up at some point, but I think, I think we need to wait. Until we get it all built and then open it up. So I think that'd be ten to fifteen years down the road.
But you still, then you still got the potential of them going to Douglas Lane, which is a small road that probably cannot handle that traffic.
But as Nick said, you got to open it up.
Well, you don't have to. I mean, you can.
Safety reasons.
Yeah. Yeah. Is there no way to go to one oh nine?
Oh, can you still hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. So one oh nine, no, we cannot, it's controlled access along one oh nine. There's not a chance to get access there. Um, I'd like to throw in a few things here. Wildcat Run at the very beginning of it, for the first several hundred feet is. Is a five lane section, five lanes wide, two lanes coming in, two lanes going out, plus a turning lane. It's not a typical city street section. So there's some redundancy built into Wildcat that would allow fire apparatus. I mean, it's, you're talking about having to have some kind of. Extreme emergency to block Wildcat. And then Wildcat even is a three lane section until you get to the back phase five through six or five through twelve. And in five through twelve has got very good connectivity, uh, throughout into fourteen. Uh, Mr. Jones has not been opposed to building this road out to Douglas, but he's also not really pushing for it either. So. While we understand what the community is, is saying, the requirement to connect to Douglas, we've been willing to make an emergency connection back there. And build the road back there and, uh, put bollards up and then they're, you know, the fire department would have an emergency access if they needed. But the residences won't be able to use it. The traffic study showed that Wildcat would be somewhat inundated without that access. But that only inconveniences the people living in subdivision to some degree, not, um, people that live outside of subdivision. So. We're just hoping that there can be some compromise here since Randy bought the ninety acres of phases, uh, six through, five through twelve. You know, we've been planning on this property of Mr. Duncan's since then. We've stubbed out streets. We've stubbed out water. We've stubbed out sewer. Working with planning over the last ten, fifteen years for this property. So we'd hate to, to not be able to utilize it when we've been planning on it for so long.
Let's do this, guys. How about we, how about we let them build it in phases and build it out to, to Douglas Lane and we put a, uh. Crash gate there for the fire department. Everybody would be able to use at the end of the project. And not build a gravel road, but we build it out in phases. So it's a complete road if fire department needs to use it. But we put a crash gate up there at the end of the project and. Uh, and we still face those houses onto Douglas Lane, the bigger lots and bigger houses.
But what are you talking about, June? You talking about like the, the houses on Douglas turned in towards Douglas and build a state type houses? And then have like a cul-de-sac with a crash gate, but no connectivity.
That's correct.
Into Twin Eagles?
That's correct.
I was told when I was, we were trying to do that up on, um, I don't remember the name of it. Where, where Duncan Street is, that we cannot have crash gates.
I remember that, Linda.
When you were talking about what?
That subdivision over there, um, going from one on, uh, the one that, I don't remember the name of the street, but it's the one where Duncan Street is.
One oh nine and one oh nine, where the publics is going to be.
Yeah. Haywood, I think.
Yes.
Why couldn't we not have a crash gate there?
You, you, you're talking about two different scenarios there though. You're talking about going from a, from a city street to a county road versus you're in a city and you got to have connectivity in the city. So you're talking about two different things. It's not apples to apples when you're talking about that.
Chief Williams. Are you there?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Um, do you remember what I'm talking about, about the crash gate? And also my other question to you is, can the big engines. Go down, uh, have, I don't know if you've been down Douglas Lane, but there are. Really sharp curves on a very narrow lane. And how do you feel about the engines driving down that way? And trying to speak.
Well, my thoughts are that the roads are definitely too narrow. Um, for fire department access roads, roads are supposed to be at least a minimum of twenty feet. And we know that those roads are maybe ten, twelve feet at, at best. Um, so we would have an issue traveling those roads, no doubt. Um, and as for your first question, yes, we did oppose the crash gates. Um, we just felt again, as fire department access requires, we need to have immediate access to move about. And to gain access in emergency situations and gates and anything like that impedes our movement and our progress and it causes us time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But let me ask a question to Andy again. Andy, on one oh nine right there, Councilman Hayes brought it up about no connectivity to one oh nine. Is it because you're. You guys own property up to the one oh nine corridor? Is it, is that access point built over or just because you cannot load a road on that type of a highway right now?
Well, Nick can jump in here to, to either agree or disagree, but. That's, uh, controlled access along Highway, uh, new one oh nine and state's not going to allow access just anywhere on this, on the, for what one oh nine was created to be. And, uh, furthermore, the, the fence along there. Tells us that it's controlled access and they're just, they're not going to give Randy, T D's not going to give Randy any, any more access, especially for a city street.
That's part of that interlocal agreement, I believe, like Nick.
Uh, it, it's not an interlocal agreement, but, um, as Andy had controlled access. Runs the entire, um, boundary of Twin Eagles development. And then on the north side. Um, there's actually, uh, and then, uh, a, um, an easement, environmental overlay. It's, uh. It's, it's in the green belt, so to speak, where an easement's been dedicated. So nothing can be built on it, especially or to head north. Um, when the Albert Galton Avenue Extension Project was, uh, developed and property was purchased, uh, from Randy Jones. There was a pretty significant, um, dollar amount that was given to Randy, uh, to acquire that property, also preclude him from having access, um, in that area. And so he was, he was paid a decent amount, um, to, to not have access on nine.
Is that true? Pay for that pond.
I'd like to, if I may, this is Rosemary Bates with Economic Development Agency. Sean, another reason that access is. On one oh nine between Highway twenty-five and the new elevated interchange with, uh, Albert Galton. It, the reason that. Very expensive elevated interchange is being built is because we don't want any more at-grade crossings. And to add an at-grade crossing between Highway twenty-five and that elevated interchange defeats the purpose of that highway altogether. And.
I'm with you, Rosemary.
Yeah.
Thank you for answering that. I, I'd like to jump out on a little limb, I guess, and, and give my thoughts. I, I think Randy is a great builder. I think he builds nice houses. He's been here for a long time. He wouldn't be in this community still building if he didn't do something. Good, right. Uh, I'm, I'm for him as far as building. And, and building out on the Twin Eagle side right there. But what I would like to see, and, and I know it's not a perfect world, but I'd love to see like a cul-de-sac. Going off Douglas right there and he'll build some larger estate homes right there to help blend with that area right there. And I would, I would love to see no connectivity. Or if we did have any kind of connectivity, the, uh, crash day like, like Councilman Overton said. That's my opinion.
If, if I could jump in once, for just a second, um, I would also add too that. Unless the city of Galton or Randy or another developer makes some really hefty monetary improvements to the sewer system. This is it for Twin Eagles and this watershed. Nothing else is going to be able to drain back into this property from a sewer standpoint. It just won't have the capacity. So this is the last thing.
I, it, it's, as much as I like Randy and everything, I support him. I just, as far as that road coming out there on Douglas, I just don't think we need to. Good wing the citizens of the Douglas area right there. I think that's a, that's a, that road's had all it can take.
Could I ask Nick something? Uh, cause I, I, Nick?
Yes, sir.
You, you said, uh, in the future, we were going to have to have an access. To this development down the road.
Opinion that we, personally, I feel like we've gone way beyond with the existing Twin Eagles development, uh, for one access point. And so just to continue to add fifty, seventy-five, a hundred plus more units, um, we're, we're putting ourselves, um, in a very. Bad situation when it comes to, um, an emergency. Um, and I know we've been talking about fire access, but. Uh, we found out back in two thousand and six here in Galison that a tornado, um, can, can cause a lot of damage and can create some very significant. Issues when you don't have more than one way in and out of a subdivision. And so those are the kind of things that, that we want to be prepared for, uh, that we can respond to and we can, we can help folks, uh, and. And right now we really aren't set up to do that with Twin Eagles.
Do you foresee in the future, uh, access somewhere in that division, in that subdivision anywhere else?
They, the most logical place to go is to Douglas Lane. Uh, there is maybe some. Difficult route to get right, to get back down to Red River Road, uh, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be easy. Um, it would be through. Probably two or three different property owners. Um, and I'm, I'm sure.
To get access onto Red River?
To get back directly to Red River, uh, to kind of wrap around on Red River. It would not be an easy route.
But there is a possibility.
There, there's land, uh, that's not built out and not built on, uh, but it wouldn't be easy.
Okay. I mean, lo- long as I, I mean, I, I guess I feel as long as I can get access, uh, in the future, I don't have a problem, like Mr. Oaken said. Uh, to have this subdivision to be built in section, uh, knowing that, uh, down the road, I will be able to have access out of, more than one. Access in and out of that subdivision.
Now, when I say that it's possible to get back to Red River Road, I, I, Randy does not own property that fronts on Red River Road. So.
I'm saying.
You would have to go through two or three different property owners to get back down to Red River Road.
So John D, are you saying that you think it's all right to, to have this access going onto Douglas?
Well, what I'm saying is, uh, according to what Nick was telling us, that we're going to have to have access somewhere down the road. So. I feel more comfortable by building in, uh, in section, uh, than I would than just. Okaying the whole development all the way through. I, I would like to see the development to continue. Knowing that there's a possibility that I could have access, another access. I, I just don't like the idea of having one access in and, you know, no other way out. But if there's a, a possibility where we could, uh, acquire another access somewhere else, I would love to see this vet to continue in phases, if you will.
I see what you, I see what you're saying, but in the meantime, I just, I just feel like that road is dangerous and adding more cars. That would harm a lot of people's safety. But I, I mean, it would be great if there could be an access back up onto Red River at some point. But, I mean, maybe the builders should stop building and, until that, uh, until we are able to get another access.
I guess it's, I guess that's one reason why, you know, I would lo- love to see it to continue in phases. So we can monitor it more closely. Then just, uh, I guess just open up the door already.
Well, guys, I tell you, Randy has a right to build on that piece of property and, 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 and I have to look out for the people in that subdivision and they need another access in that subdivision as well. So. Uh, I still say that we need to allow, allow them to build that road out in phases. And when you get to the end of that thing, that we need to open it up.
I agree with you, Jimmy. Jimmy, you first said about a crash gate though, and no connectivity.
I said that when all of you guys were, were talking about doing that, but, um, if Chief Williams don't want a crash gate, I understand. I understand it'd be more difficult to just pull in the fire engine in there or, or police cars or whatever you're pulling in there. I understand there's a lot more to it and you got a crash gate. So. Uh, but, but, but I, but I have to look out for the people sitting in that subdivision as well. And, and there's a lot of houses in there and they need another exit. But, but, but Mr. Jones has a right to, to build out this subdivision.
He has a right to, but is it right to do that? But in the meantime, uh, you know, Andy was right, that is a big entrance going in on Wildcat. That's, it's. Twice as big as a normal entrance would be. So it would take a lot to, to really block that. And I, I just feel like that, that road is just dangerous.
What's dangerous?
The road on, uh, Douglas Lane.
So can I jump in one last time, please? And.
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, Andy.
Just to paint the, the overall picture here. So this land is currently in the county and all the county is, is Josh can explain, just got re, rezoned. And this will be called rural residential. Uh, minimum lot size forty thousand square foot on septic and that's it. The soil's good. But with that being stated, you know, we've got about sixty acres there. So let's just say we could get forty or fifty lots. That's a significant, uh, decrease in density. Not going to deny that. Anybody can see that. But as such, we would be connecting to Douglas with the county subdivision. And probably would even, um, um, Nick, you jump in here, please, but I would say that. Nick would also want that opportunity for us to connect up to these, uh, Twin Eagles too. So if we develop this in the county, we're connecting to Douglas and we're also connecting back to Twin Eagles to provide that connectivity for the other four hundred something lots. And that's something that Randy could do by right, right now. Uh, and develop it in the county. So yes, he's.
If y'all checked into doing that, I mean, that might be another, that might be an option.
But you're still, you're still going to open it up, Greg. No matter what you do, you got to open it up.
That's what, that's the point I'm trying to make. We're still gonna, we're still gonna give these four hundred something lots in Twin Eagles access to Douglas. He's just not going to get as many houses out of it. You know what I'm saying?
If the county appr- but the county would still have to approve that.
The county couldn't really s- stop it because we'd be developing it within accordance with the existence out of the current zone.
They would, would they not have to, would they not have to approve the access to Douglas?
We've already talked to Ms. Ms. Harden about that.
And what'd she say?
She's okay with connecting to Douglas.
But is she the one, is, is she, is it hers? Is it the county commission that would decide that?
That's a good question, Councilman Craig. And I, I. It really wouldn't go to county commission because it would go, just like, uh, when we develop within the Galton's zone and orders that don't come to you guys. It would just go to planning commission.
Yeah.
But.
Now, I'm not going to say that. Now, I'm not going to say that county commissioners couldn't be involved. I'm just saying the process would be typical to just go through Ms. Judy.
And she's already said that the road will not be improved.
She also said that they got an overlay that she's thinking to do out there, and they're going to try to widen it as much as she can with this, with their next pavings coming through there. But the standard that we use across the whole county when we're developing outside of county, her rule of thumb is 18 foot wide. If the roads are 18 foot wide, and then she tends to be okay with it. And I know that's not Gallatin's standard, but that's, that's the rule of thumb she uses. Or that we've typically used in most places. Let me, let me back up and say that. That we typically use in developing out in the county. And I've been a part of at least 200 or 300 county lots in the last two years.
And how wide is that road out there, Andy, on Douglas Lane?
It's at least 18. It's, as somebody stated earlier, they thought it was 20 foot, so it's anywhere from 18 to 20 foot wide.
They said, I thought they said about 12 to 15.
Right.
I believe I did hear that too, but I don't know if, I'm sure we can find some spot that's that narrow and along the thing. I'm not going to deny that.
Yeah, it's, I'd say there's no way it's 18 feet wide. There's no way.
It is.
Yeah, it is, but generally, for the, for the majority of the roadway, it's, it's at least 18. It's between 18, 18 and a half, 19 feet.
Yeah, because I've driven out that way. I know it's more than 12. That's for sure.
Yeah.
It's, it's narrow, but like Andy said, that for, for a county roadway, it, it's not bad. But, and that's, that's going by the county standard.
Right. Yeah, Nick's completely right. It's county standard.
So, so, so Nick, you said it's at least 18 feet wide?
Yes.
Okay, that, that sound, that sound better than a 10, because I know I've driven out that way, and I know it's wider than a 10.
Has Ms. Harding stated how wide she thinks she can make that road?
I'm not sure. She did not go into detail with me with that. She just said they were going to try to get as much out of it as they could. And when I say wide, and we're not talking about feet, we're probably talking about 6 to 8 inches.
Each side or just one?
Is wherever she can get it at.
I mean, because there's no shoulder out there on that road, none.
Yeah, she'll probably get maybe a half a foot to a foot, I would think.
And I've been told that some of the people own to the middle of the road.
That's what I meant by a prescriptive right of way, Ms. Love, which means that you're right, they do own to the center of the roadway.
I still feel like we should just follow the recommendation of the planning commission and let the county, let the county do this.
I feel like we should defer this and figure it out later.
What, what's, what's your reason for defer? Just to see what they can come up with, or what?
Yeah, that, and I don't think we're all in agreement right now, or there's too many question marks.
And plus the fact, you know, Nick, which I'm standing on Nick's word, because he's a city engineer, he said the road is at least 18 feet wide. So that's a huge difference from what was said at first, that the road only 10 to 12 feet wide.
Yeah, but I'm telling you, if you're out there and you drive that road and you pass a school bus or you pass a truck, you have to literally stop. You cannot, two vehicles that size cannot go by each other on that road. And there's too many places, there's no shoulder on that road, there's not anything. And if she goes and winds that road, she might get six inches. Might.
Not to mention the curves.
Has anybody approached any of the property owners about giving a right of way to enlarge, to widen the road? I mean, if they're complaining about the width of the road, I mean, if I owned the property, I'd give up a foot or two, I believe.
I think like the country feeling of it, the country road.
But who's going to widen the road? That's the question.
Well, I would think it would be a county project that's an improvement. And like, if we build it out in sections, we're going to have plenty of time to get that done.
Yeah, I mean, that's, there's another question right there. Yeah.
I'll let you guys know that we have not approached any homeowners or property owners. And just my experience with the county, a developer-driven project, just like in the city, the county's not going to pay for that. The developer would have to, which would be standard.
That's, that's kind of what I thought, too. So Steve, did you make a motion?
I'm making a motion to defer, yes.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that motion?
I'd like to go back out and ask Andy, if I'm hearing it right. Andy, what I heard from you is Randy does have the right on the land coming off of Douglas to put estate-type homes in there with the road load onto Douglas right now, if he wants to, as long as he follows or within the rules of the county, correct?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, and how many homes did you say it could be added to load onto Douglas with that project?
Well, I can't say with 100% certainty because they'd have to be on septic.
Okay, what's percal? I understand.
Right, so your 40,000 square foot lots is your minimum, plus your right of way for your roads.
And then, and then you're also saying that if the city come in there, done the Twin Eagles, you went ahead and completed Twin Eagles development right there, then Nick's going to call for connectivity anyway.
I think he will, and if he's still on here, he can interject.
I just want to make sure I heard everything right. Okay.
I think he said that, I think he said that it wasn't absolutely necessary, but it was recommended.
Highly recommended is what he said.
So Andy, can you give us like a kind of a round number estimate of how many of the estate homes?
We would think hopefully 50 or 60, but, you know, you'd have county roads that would, that would come right up to a city street. And then would, if, you know, if Gallatin didn't want us to connect to them, I guess it'd just be cul-de-sac. Which would defeat the purpose of connecting Twin Eagles up and having a secondary access.
And we do already have some roads, Andy, still got out there?
We have three locations stubbed into this particular 60 acres already.
Okay. Well, that sounds good to me. I'm all for the development in phases.
Okay, any other discussion on the deferment?
I just have a most, a question for clarification. Are we deferring to the next work session? Are you deferring indefinitely? What is exactly the motion?
Steve?
Um, next work session.
Hey, I've got a question.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not in this ball, but is there any way of having a entrance only off of Douglas Bean, I mean, off Douglas Lane? Entrance only.
Good questions. Smart question.
One-way street, one-way street. I think, Mr. Gregory, as far as that's concerned, the only way we would have to police it would be with signage. But yeah, it's, you know, anything's possible as far as that goes.
That might help, but car, lots of cars could still be traveling home at the same time.
I'm, I'm just saying, you know, that entrance only, you know, that's, that's the way it's supposed to be.
You could also force left-hand turning movements only coming out to keep people from going back to the, to the north, north, you know, north, northeast. So there's things that could be done to direct traffic, but none of it would alleviate traffic on Douglas.
It would, it would be more safe, kind of leaning towards what Mr. Gregory was saying. You know, if we just had a mega, oh, oh. I, I just still feel strongly about the development in, in phases, because I, I wouldn't want to hinder or stop it. But yet, same token, I'm really concerned about the safety in and out.
I'm afraid, I, I would hate for somebody to be killed.
It's possible on any, any road.
Well, we can add risk and we can take away risk, too. I feel like we're adding a huge amount of risk.
No more risk than a sign being knocked down in our city square every week.
I thought, I think you knocked, I think you knocked.
No, I didn't, no, I didn't.
Yeah, I did.
Anything else on the deferment?
So we're just deferring this for two weeks, correct?
Yes, he said until the next work session, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
No.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
The vote is six ayes and one no.
Okay, thank you. That moves us to item number, what are we on, 19? Resolution number R2008-43, Mr. Tuttle.
Thank you, Councilman Hayes. This is a resolution. Let me check my agenda just to be sure. This is a resolution to accept money from M A B America, which is the commercial developer of the Wind Song Development, which is the development that's in the northeast or the northwest quadrant of the intersection of 109, 109 bypass, South Water Airport Road. So if you all will recall, when we went through the rezoning process on the Wind Song Development, the developer was, was, heard the concerns of the downstream citizens and, and commented that they were interested in trying to help the city in mitigating and dealing with some of the issues of downstream flooding in the Hellwood subdivision. And so the developer, and, and I have been in conversations about a watershed study within the subdivision that includes the watershed that comes from Wind Song Development, but also the existing watershed that is coming from the north. And so the, the money is being donated, I think it's an amount of somewhere around $54,000. There's a survey portion to the study, that's another 12 or $13,000 that the city would fund out of our existing stormwater utility funds. We have professional service money already appropriated that can go towards that expense. So we're not asking to, to appropriate any more money or create, or add more money to any, anything from the city budget. We're just asking to accept the money that M A B is trying to give us. And then probably in two weeks, we'll be coming forward with an ordinance or, or very shortly after we actually receive the funds, we'll be coming forward with an ordinance to be able to appropriate those funds and, and spend those funds.
Most approve.
Second.
I have a question. Nick, originally they had indicated that they would spend $100,000 if they still committed to spending the remainder of that once the study's done.
They may. Mayor, I'm not sure if there's a representative on the line here. I know I was talking to Mr. John Argo. I'm looking to see. I see somebody named Anthony with a hand up, but I don't know who Anthony is. So I'm not sure if they're on the line here. I don't see Mr. Argo's name in this list. But I, I, after the, the study comes back, the results, I do intend to, to ask for more, if we can find some help on some projects downstream. So this is not going to be forgotten by me. We'll be moving it forward. So if there's anything that the council would like for me to communicate to them, then I'd be happy to do that. Now, there wasn't anything put in writing. The council did not require this developer to do anything downstream. You're right, Mayor, they did comment that they would, they would give up to $100,000. In their comments, they said that they wanted that $100,000 to be matched by the city. Correct, that is correct. And, and that's, but to that point, nobody committed to, to anything. It was just a statement that they made. They didn't commit to it. The council didn't hold them to it. And so I feel like they're, they're being a good developer here and helping with this issue that hopefully they're not contributing to, but they're going to be coming and helping with the, to find some solutions.
Yeah, I remember when we talked about this, and that's the, that's the development I was talking about earlier, that Duncan Street was going to go through, and the people on the, on the Duncan Street side were worried about the flooding.
Yes, ma'am.
And it had a lot of flooding in the past.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
The vote's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item number 20, the 2020, 2021 pavement rehabilitation recommendation, Mr. Tuttle.
Thank you, Councilman Hayes. And I also have Dwayne Rogers here on the line as well, our assistant city engineer. He's responsible for developing the recommendation, and you should have in your packet the, the recommendation that we have for the 2020, 2021 funds that have been appropriated, which is $900,000. And we will be needing to go out for a new bid this year. We have been under contract with Charles Dewey's Construction for the last two years, and it's time for us to renew that contract. And so there'll be an open bid after we have an approval on these streets, so that we have some quantities to work off of. And I'll let Dwayne Rogers there speak if he's got anything he'd like to add concerning the recommendation.
No, just like Nick said, in your packets, we, we included the, the recommendation. Hopefully, you guys have had a chance maybe to, to go out and look at these particular streets within your district. And tonight, basically, we're just asking you guys to accept this recommendation. If you have or are all in agreement with these roads. If not, maybe it's something, you know, you could look at between now and next work session, and we can put it back on. But like I said, tonight, we're just asking for approval. If you need a little more time, we understand, but that's, that's up to you guys as a, as a group.
We're moving on to council, man. If we got any discussion, we still discuss it to council.
Yeah, is that a motion, Jim?
Yeah, it is.
I'll second that.
Got a motion, second. Any other discussion?
I just want to make sure if we might, again, they, they do a good clean job of it, not make a big mess.
Nick, correct me if I'm wrong, but this, I mean, does this need to actually go? I mean, it won't be an ordinance or resolution for an actual, we're just asking for approval of the list.
Of the list, right.
The money is already appropriated, and typically the way we handle this is bring us to a committee meeting to get your concurrence. And we don't normally pass a formal resolution or ordinance to adopt the list, since we already have the money appropriated.
Then let's put it on for next work session, just so we can all have a check.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah. Okay, that sounds good. Thank you, guys.
Okay, all right. Appreciate it. All right, so we're moving it on to the next work session. Any other business from anybody? Any council member?
I have just one direction to my, Mr. Tuttle. Any progress on the project that you've been working on on the square?
Yes, sir. And, and I may, Zach Wilton can may jump in here. Our traffic signal technician has been able to get some quotes on the, it's a, the, the company is called Lane Light, which we've talked about, the lighting along the edge of the crosswalk. The quotes that we've received, it's going to require us to actually do a competitive bid because of the, the number is a large number. It's approximately $30,000 for the parts to, that would go towards this lane light product of lighting the edge of the crosswalk. So that doesn't include the installation, and I'm not sure if we would need to do any design. Depends on whether or not we could actually do this work in-house. And I know Zach's folks are looking into that to see if they're capable. Uh, and I know Zach's um, folks are looking into that to see if they're capable of that installation right now. So I don't have a I don't have an answer for you right now, but we do have some progress at least. We're we're getting some numbers together and um, hopefully be able to come forward with something for you.
Greg, I got one.
Yeah.
We had a meeting with Nick Tuttle and some residents from Belvedere Peninsula. Nick can jump in here and talk about it as well. But as y'all know, a few months ago, we give Nick and him the authority to try the roundabouts on Peninsula and Belvedere. And guys are just not working, so we've got to do something else. So we had a meeting uh, on Monday with Nick and and residents over there that represent some of the homeowners. And I think we need at this point, we just need to take out the roundabouts, put the stop signs back in. Nick Tuttle is going to do a survey with all the residents over there and see if if they're in agreement that we put some uh, speed humps, not bumps, but speed humps like we already have on Peninsula. Uh, and if and if the residents over there, if the majority of them want to put in, then we'll put those back in. We'll put those in throughout that subdivision and hopefully we'll put it to bed. But these uh, these roundabouts are not working. Uh, the school bus garage and everybody else is is said they're not working and uh, the residents, I've got many, 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 many complaints that they're not working. So at this point, we just need to take them out and do the survey and let's see if we need to put in speed humps.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah.
Everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jimmy, Jimmy, I I guess one thing. On those, if you if we are going to revert back to speed humps or bumps, I might recommend that we've got quite a bit invested in the in the roundabouts and we use those temporary speed humps to kind of as the delineators on those uh, roundabouts so we can reuse those rather than them going to waste for the speed bumps if if they wouldn't be like the ones on, I guess, Peninsula now. They'd be the temporary ones if we maybe they'd give us opportunity to reuse a bunch of those.
Okay, well, you can get with Zach. I mean, when Nick come mad, I'm okay with it. But I just Nick wants to do a survey over there and get, you know, a- as you know before, years and years ago, and some of you weren't on the council, we actually put in speed bumps over there and we got a lot of flack over it. So Nick wants to be sure that we're talking about speed humps and we want to be sure that the majority of subdivision, what they want to do. And I agree one hundred percent with Nick on that. But at this point, these things are just not working and it's just time to get them out right now. Let's put the stop signs back in until Nick can get this survey done.
Maybe maybe you can put some of those roundabout things over on East Eastland for a while.
There's not enough room and that's a problem we got on Peninsula. We don't have enough property to put those things in. So you got to have a lot of property like like in Fairview and other places to make them work properly. And we just don't have the property there to make them work properly.
Well, in regards to the traffic sign on the square, uh, Councilman Alexander must have put a dent that hundred fifty thousand dollar truck when he hit that sign.
Nick, you got anything to say about that?
Who was it me?
All right, do you have anything else?
Nick, you got to add to that?
Well, that just as I've been thinking about it over the past couple of days. Yes, things to take those speed bumps, um, which I I don't want to use on a city street um, on a normal basis. Uh, but uh, just to simulate um, the speed humps for the time being, maybe what we can do is is for about a um, a month's time, um, just like we did with these um, roundabouts, the mini roundabouts.
Yeah.
Uh, we can go in and and do a trial period uh, with speed bumps at locations where we would end up putting speed humps.
Okay.
Uh, and 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 let's run that as a trial as well before I send out this survey. And we'll have a an option A and an option B at that point that we have the citizens comment on as opposed to um, us going out, me sending a survey out, them saying they want speed bumps, they want stop signs, they want all this. But then when we put it out there, I get fifty phone calls saying they hate them and they want them taken out. Um, at least we could have a trial run just like and that's what the traffic calming program is supposed to to do. It's supposed to 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 try to simulate what the permanent installation would be before we go out and make a decision and put a permanent installation out there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Yeah.
Do you have a problem with that, Mr. Overton?
No, no, I don't care. I mean, I I just want to try something different. I know most people aren't going to want the speed bumps. They're going to want the humps in there, but if we need to try that, I'm okay with it, Nick. Okay, let's just try something different.
Okay, sounds sounds good. That's that's the way I'll proceed unless um, unless I hear otherwise from this body.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything else? City council?
Oh, just just one other thing. Let me thank Zach Secretary and Ms. Rosemary for contacting the contractor on a hat and track about those um, tall uh, grass and stuff, you know, uh, the contractor did give me a call and next day or so they was all cut down. So I appreciate Ms. Rosemary and the young folk working on that and contacting the necessary people for that. Thank you so much.
All right, what about department is? Any department is?
I I do.
Hi.
Um, Rosemary Bates again. Um, just FYI, I tried to speak when you were talking about the Bloods so Springs subdivision. I just want to correct what may have been a misstatement by somebody if I heard it correctly. Ms. Love, you asked if this was near or adjacent or how far away this is from the industrial center. It's actually adjacent to the industrial center on two sides uh, at the top corner, but during the planning commission meetings, uh, Mr. Fenton had many discussions with the developer about removing a set of buildings that caused concern that we didn't want people coming back after living in these and saying, oh, no, we don't like being next to an industrial center. So um, and he also asked that there be a caveat, put in the deed or the plat or something that says that they're very aware they're moving in next to an industrial center. The the other part of this, though, it it is adjacent. It's not a mile and a half away. And I thought I heard someone say it was a mile and a half away and it's not. It's right next to it. And and then the other thing I had for y'all is uh, just encourage you to encourage everybody you know on social media or your friends whenever you talk to them. The plan Galton dot org visual preference survey is going to be up for about another week. We've had a good response, but we'd like more. Plan Galton dot org. And when you get into the site, just look for the visual preference survey. And one last thing, there's a Brenda Simmons Lee who wanted to comment about Bloods so Springs. And I tried desperately to help her get into the Zoom meeting and it just never quite worked. And um, it seems to me that she wanted to express some opposition. It may have been about a a question about water runoff onto the next door neighborhood. Maybe the Valley Ridge Drive area. I I'm just trying to help her because I kept talking to her on Facebook and said, comments only count if you go to Zoom. Please go to Zoom. And she tried and just couldn't get it.
Okay. Any other department is?
Try again next week.
Mayor's wanting to speak.
Thank you. May I?
Any other? Oh, okay.
Um, I have just two things. One, um, I haven't touched base with the council in a while about the continuation of virtual meetings. As you know, the governor has allowed for these through the end of August. We said they would, we would take them on a week to week basis. We're still continuing them. We don't know if the governor will extend that opportunity for virtual meetings to continue past August, but I wanted to touch base with you guys and see if you wanted to continue virtual meetings or if you're ready to start meeting in person.
Continue version meeting.
Virtual.
Virtual.
I'd say virtual considering that we all had to wear our masks at that ribbon cutting today.
Right.
Are the kids going to school?
Yes.
We got kids going to school. We don't want to meet. I got a problem with that.
I'm ready to meet. I don't care.
The kid, the kids are apparently going because the risk to their health is not as strong as to an adult. Really, I I mean, I I would do either one.
Just vote on it. Just take a vote. Roll call, please.
On on what?
Whether we're going to continue virtual.
Oh, I thought.
You talking about September?
No, I I mean, right now we have to after September, but I'm talking about here um, from starting next week, I guess.
I thought we already voted.
I thought we already told by doing it all the way through the end of August. Yeah.
Now, we we said that we had the uh, uh, opportunity to do it through the end of August that that we would take it on a week to week basis and you all basically kind of agreed and seemed eager to continue virtually. And so we had done that, but I just felt like it was time to touch base with you guys and see. Um, are you comfortable about meeting in person or do you want to continue virtual? Um, I think at this point you should say either we're back in person or we're virtual through the end of August.
Virtual through the end of August.
Just just for other people. I mean, just for the citizens sake, so they'll know what to expect.
Also, we may have to wear masks if we're if we're all together and that's hard to hear and understand.
And they're also saying six feet apart. Uh, social distance is not safe now.
Wow.
So are we going to spread out if we do meet up here?
Well, when Jimmy and I went to the county meeting last night, they had X's and the rooms walked off where you had to be so far forward and I had to wear your mask.
I said, let's let's go through the end of August and then.
They take your temperature before you come in too, don't they?
Oh, they did last night.
They did. Every time I've been up there, they.
Yes, during the day.
Okay, let's go through August. Paige, you have anything else?
Yes, um, I spoke this week with Director of Greater Gallatin about the Main Street Festival, which, as you know, happens each year first Saturday in October. And she wanted to know um, the council's opinion on this. Of course, they would, you know, it's an outside festival. You know, they would set the booths further apart. People could be outside. They could attend. Um, you know, wearing masks or whatever the order may be at that time. Um, whatever they call the East Nashville Tomato Festival, it happened this past weekend. And so they're thinking that's like a really good opportunity for the public. I can see that it's something that's really desired in our community at the time, well, or by the that time. And um, but they need to know whether to move forward with planning at this point or if you guys are highly opposed to it.
Which would they be able, I'm sorry, would they be able to cancel it if the COVID becomes worse?
Well, I mean, there's always the opportunity to cancel because I mean, things have had to be canceled because weather and stuff in the past, but as far as planning and she and she doesn't think it'll be as big as in years past because you're still going to have vendors who are reluctant to participate and you're going to have citizens who are reluctant to attend. But um, she feels like that, you know, people can attend. Um, you know, safely, keep their distance, but still enjoy the festival with lots of modifications and 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 sanitation stations and all that kind of good stuff, so.
I thought it was illegal.
Yeah.
Who could say no? Them or the city?
Greater Gallatin.
Then why don't they just make their decision and and roll on with it?
Well, because I mean, we're allowing them to close the streets for it and everything and they don't want to do anything that we aren't supportive of, which I appreciate.
What did Sean just say about legality?
I was wondering if there's a legality issue about assembling that many people.
But you're not, I mean, it's it 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 the assembly number limits are about a space and this is, you know, in theory, you could divide every, I don't know, thirty feet into the space or every fifty feet into a space. Um, you know, we're talking about a few block radius. And so I don't know that whole thing about um, gatherings, I think it's, I don't know what the number of people is at this point, but it's been ten, it's been fifty, it's been two fifty. I think it but.
If the number's okay, I like to see him do it.
I'm just sort of skipping about that. Will they be required to wear a mask?
Well, if the mascot, if the mask requirements are in place at that time, I'd say yes.
I know the mask uh, requirements in place in like Nashville, but a lot of people don't go by it. So do we arrest people if they don't?
No.
I just don't feel comfortable at this time making that decision. It's just me and one person.
Silence it is.
Appreciate it.
Yep. Okay.
Councilman Overton has indicated that he'd like to see them go ahead. Councilman Alexander has um, shared his reservations and concern. Yea or nay, the rest of you? For or against?
Uh, since it's outside and a couple of months away, I would and they're going to be taking every precaution, I think I would lean more towards going ahead and planning it and then they can cancel it if the.
If they get a lot worse, I mean, they can cancel it, but right now I think they need to move forward with it.
Ain't gonna cancel. That's the issue.
Okay.
Greg, what do you want? Greg, what do you say?
Um, it it don't matter me, one way or the other.
Shaw?
I don't care one way or the other.
Councilman Camp and Fan?
Uh, let them have it. Let's go.
Vice Mayor Camp?
I don't care.
There you go, Mayor.
All right, well, you've given me something to pass on to.
I appreciate it. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Okay, any other department is? Any other department is? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Most of adjourned.
A motion second. All in favor? We don't need a roll call, do we?
No.
All right.
Good night.